Evening Mayor and City Council members. I'm Darren Mearing, a civil engineer with the engineering department. Thanks for affording me the opportunity to kind of provide an update on the B Branch watershed flood mitigation project. Obviously with recent flooding, citizens in late July experienced or witnessed some of the same flooding issues that kind of basically have led to this watershed project. And so it only makes sense to kind of ask, well, where are we on the project and where are we going? And so that's why I'm here before you today. The first thing to point out is that, you know, while the B Branch Creek Restoration Project is the most prominent, the most noteworthy, the largest of all the improvements, it is but one of many phases of a project where all the elements are shown here and that all of these elements are important to addressing the flooding issues that we've seen over the last decade or so and some of those that we saw just a few weeks ago. And so you can see the schedule, you know, some of these are going to take significant time to implement, but most of them are going to be done within the next five years. And at the same time, we have made progress and we are realizing the benefits of some of these improvements. One of the things I want to point out because it potentially has an impact on the schedule, and I say potentially just because we're still not there in the process yet, it's related to the HUD grant that was awarded to the state of Iowa and the city of Dubuque as a sub recipient. And what it does is, is it, three of our projects that we had already identified in our watershed flood mitigation project, three of our phases essentially are going to be getting funding through this HUD program. And so it's going to have to fit on their, the schedule that goes with that grant funding. As of right now, before we can start kind of really getting to work on these improvements, there has to be an agreement between the federal government and the state level for the original award, and then we have to have an agreement in place with the state as a sub recipient. So we hope to resolve that sometime and have something in front of you in October, although right now it's a little bit out of our hands. But that's kind of the schedule. And so once, once that day hits, then those projects we have outlined in yellow here, we will hit really hard as far as starting to advance the design and move towards construction of these improvements. I don't list the B Branch Healthy Homes Resiliency Program as another eight and a half million or so. That's kind of on the housing side where I'm mainly concentrating on the infrastructure side. But if you, you know, when you do consider that as part of our overall flood mitigation project, it increased our total project cost to about 218 million. And then with the grant funding through HUD, actually our city share goes down while our, the scope of our projects are actually increasing. So that kind of makes it worth the slight delay in getting going on some of these improvements. So I'm just going to step through each one of these phases and just give a brief update on some of them and a little more detail on others on where we are and what we're doing. So West 32nd Street Detention Base was completed in 2009, but as with any, you know, infrastructure project or public infrastructure, we need to maintain it, monitor it, make sure it's doing what we need it to do during rainstorms. So just this spring, we had an assessment done to look into the, you know, the growing, the plantings, the establishment of the prairie grasses and the wetlands. And then this report has to be sent back to the United States Army Corps of Engineers who provide us the permit for us to construct this. And so one of the things that they found was that it's, it has a wealth of, a variety of the prairie grasses and wetland that they wanted to see. Minor maintenance as far as spot, kind of control of some non-native invasive plants that we have to do this summer. And then, again, this fall, we had, we were going to try to do it this spring, but in order to promote the growth of the wildflowers and the prairie grass and the wetland type plantings, you do a controlled burn. Again, we tried to do it this spring, but if you notice the difference in the two pictures there, in the burn, the grass is obviously very dry. You really can't burn a green grass, so that's why it has to be done in the spring before the rains and before the weather takes hold, or later in the fall. The lower B Branch has been functional in terms of flood mitigation since 2011, but there's other things that we need to do with it. One of those is, again, maintaining the plantings that we have. We also assessed that this spring as far as how the plantings are coming along. Applied Ecological Services did an assessment and basically concluded that it's, that it's an excellent example of a pollinator habitat in the city of Dubuque. So we're, they were, they were kind of glowing about, this is what people want when they set about trying to grow prairie wetland grasses. Other improvements within the project is the overlook that's currently under construction. So this is to replace the Audubon overlook that was kind of built by the citizens for kind of bird watching and looking into the basin for the migratory birds. This just shows kind of what it looked like before we started construction, looking at 16th and Kerper towards City Island. So in May, that's what it looked like. You can see on the lower right where they're just trying to start to get out of the water with their construction. And that's what it looked like last week. So they've gotten out of the water, they're starting, they've got the roof on the pavilion there, and now, now that it's less dependent on the water and fighting that, they can pick up speed as far as completing that project. This just kind of looked like getting out of the ground in May. And this is what it looked like last week. The other thing that we have under development is the floating island. We'll be kind of going, preparing that design this, this fall, and this will be in place by the end of 2017 as well. The flood mitigation gate replacement project, so this is currently under design. This is related, again, to the, kind of the flood levee system that we have and where the B Branch watershed flows out of the city and into the Piazza Channel or the Mississippi River. So when the river is high, we have this gate structure that comes down and prevents the Mississippi from flooding parts of our city, and that's what this is for. So what we're looking at is replacing the gate, but also we asked IAW, the local engineers, to look at improvements to the system to help us kind of improve how that system works during different flood events. And so one of the things that we're looking at is preparing something to present to the council as an option going forward to kind of enhancing that design, and we hope to have that in front of you in the next few weeks for your consideration. Upper B Branch Creek Restoration, this is the major project, obviously, that's under construction to be completed by the end of next year. Just to remind people, it's essentially from kind of just south of Garfield Avenue up to 24th Street, a little bit past 24th Street. There are four construction contracts that we have to build all of this right now, just to kind of show where we are with each section. So this is if we were at Romberg and Nice, looking towards Garfield, up top left what it's supposed to look like when we're done, and then bottom right where it is today. And just turning and looking at Romberg Bridge. The last time we reported to you, this wasn't open to traffic yet. This has been open now since mid-June. Looking upstream towards 22nd Street, you can see the amphitheater is taking shape right here. You can see the bio, biofield infiltration basin is taking shape, 22nd Bridge. Getting up to, closer to 22nd Street, looking up 22nd, so you can see the bridge taking shape. You can also see the spill, spillway here. This is looking to the west up 22nd Street. I'll talk a little more about that in a little bit. And then this is the spillway where water in excess of the storm sewer will then leave the street and find it, and get into the, basically the creek area to be passed out to the river. Looking at 22nd Street up to 24th, as you can see here, still a lot of work to do north of 22nd Street, although you can see in the bottom right, the parking lot is starting to take shape. Essentially, we had to relocate the Heritage Trail, Trailhead parking as part of the project. We've actually expanded a little bit because of the needs of the neighborhood and off-street parking, but you can kind of see that starting to take shape there. And then at 24th Street, just looking at the outfall or where the water will exit the storm sewer, enter into the daylighted creek. See how that's taking shape? So they've started the box culvert work now across 24th Street to then connect up to the existing B Branch sewer. So I'm just going to go over a little bit about the recent flooding and what's happened with our project. So this is an image showing the water that was in the section of the upper B Branch from Garfield to Romberg Avenue. The main goal or purpose of the B Branch Creek Restoration Project is to convey or pass water through the area. And even though today it doesn't pass water the way it ultimately will, it's still providing, obviously, an area for a significant amount of storm water versus having it in the street or in people's basements. So this is the section between Romberg then and 22nd again on July, about noon on July. So one of the things to point out is just how much more storage volume was actually available. So that, that's, you know, it's about eight or so more feet it could have potted up before it would have spilled out. So there's a significant amount of additional storage that was still, still available for use. And that's important when we talk about making improvements and channeling more water there, recognizing that that's what it's for. So just to put it in perspective, if the B Branch Creek Restoration, if you're just looking at volume, it can hold about just under 19 million gallons of water, which is a lot of gallons of milk, I guess, but it's hard to picture what that is. Another way to look at it is, it would be about a foot of water in 1,300 homes in this area. So just to show how even just this, what we have completed already is already providing a benefit and kind of avoiding or minimizing, if you will, some of the property damage that we've experienced in the past, even though we're not done with it yet. And then, just to put that into contrast, that's the storm sewer that was at 22nd Street that had to carry all this water. Obviously, it's less than 20% of what could be stored there, so all this water, if it wasn't in this creek, would have been in the street, in basements, if all we had at the, right now was that storm sewer that you see there. So this time, I was just going to invite City Dubuque Fire Chief Rick Steinis up to just talk about the flooding that we've recently witnessed.
Good evening, Rick Steinis, Fire Chief. Just asked to give a quick update. Really Darren's been talking about the work that's been done and the things that have been happening, and I guess I'm kind of here to talk about the things that haven't been happening. In the last couple of weeks, some of the rainstorms that we had, heavy rains that came down over a short period of time. We had one on a Wednesday at lunchtime, another one the following evening, another one that following Saturday. In all cases, we were out, me personally, as I have been in most of the heavy rain incidents, trying to drive the area, see where the problems were, and then waiting for the calls to come in. And in some of the cases, we had calls for arcing wires, trees that fell over, the typical thing that you would see in a thunderstorm. We had exactly zero calls for water in basements. We thought that was kind of unique because in the past, typical events like that where people saw water in the streets, you know, the commonplaces, we would expect then that within a few hours, we would start to get, pick up calls for, I have water in my basement. And we're pretty pleased that we actually didn't see that. We haven't had a call like that related to flooding in the north end or the B Branch area this calendar year. And I think that's a success that, you know, we're happy to not have to respond to those because there are limited things we can do to that. Been out really all this year, Darren mentioned earlier, another rain event in June, and drove the streets. Again, we do our typical storm watch routine and wait for something to be reported and find that typically anymore, there's not much reported, and we're happy to hear that. So just thought we would add that bit to the whole B Branch part, kind of success from the fire department standpoint and response area.
Thanks, Rick. So let me go over these pictures a little bit more, but obviously, there's still our situations that citizens are dealing with, and we still have a lot of work to do as these pictures show. So we talked about 22nd Street and Kaufman. So these are some pictures that were taken, again, at noon on July 20th, basically Wednesday afternoon. In the picture on the left, you can see the water is basically coming down from the west from Kaufman Avenue. You can see the water that's kind of shooting up in the air, and that's basically a sign that the water that's in the storm sewer coming down from the west, once it reaches this location, there is no more room in that storm sewer. So it cannot go anywhere but up. And for those of you who remember your high school physics, you're basically converting this kinetic energy into static energy, basically into elevation. So that's really what's happening. And so that's why we have this need to increase that storm sewer between this point and the B Branch Creek Project. And that was what the original 22nd Street Project was intended to do, and that's the one we hope to get under construction next summer sometime. Again, it has a little bit to do with the HUD timing, the HUD grant timing, but that's one of the first things that we want to accomplish. The other picture then is just kind of turning around at the same time and looking downstream. And you can actually see a person who's trying to cross the street there, probably at Jackson Street. And they actually, at one point, fall. You might ask yourself, well, why is this person, you know, trying to cross that? Well, think about it, where if you're walking and you need, it's noon and you have someplace to go, there really isn't a lot of options for you at this point, you know, to get north of, from north of 22nd to south of 22nd. So again, just to underscore the need for these additional phases even after we get the B Branch Creek Project done. I also want to show, again, how this works in relationship to the B Branch Creek Project. So again, picture on the left is what I showed before. So the picture on the right is the same time downstream there, what's happening in the B Branch. And you can, unfortunately, we don't have the spillway done yet. Even though Ports and Construction and Tricon Construction have done a great job being ahead of schedule, this is one thing that they're, haven't had in place yet. And you can see that the water is kind of washing out along here and then coming in, where once we get the spillway done, you won't have that washout and it'll come down the spillway. You can see the wood there, that's the forming to kind of build that structure. But I wanted to point out how there's still quite a bit of capacity in the B Branch at this location while you have a lot of water at 22nd Street. That's at 1205. Now, if I jump ahead 17 minutes, so 22nd Street is pretty much dry, and the B Branch Creek has come up a couple of feet, maybe a foot and a half in that time period. So obviously, there was room for that water in the, in the B Branch Creek, and there's still more room for that water in the B Branch Creek. Again, just to put them side by side. So again, it also goes to how this will function in that it's not that you'll have a wave of water come down the B Branch Creek, it's just that the water will slowly rise as, over time. So over 17 minutes, the water just kind of starts to rise up versus some sort of wave coming through. So in that respect, that's how it will function, but again, it's not functioning today as it will in terms of its flood control benefit. But so that's, again, the importance of the 22nd Street improvements. Then also, the Kaufman Avenue improvements, it's basically an extension of that where we're going to be able to do the improvements all the way up to Kane, essentially get, make sure that that water is in that storm sewer and not coming down the street, so that by the time it gets to 20, or I'm sorry, it gets to Central Avenue, more water is in the storm sewer as well, so it's not flowing over, over the street. The railroad culverts, again, this is now the new critical part of our project. Just a reminder, so we, this involves upsizing the conveyance or the allowing storm water to flow from the upper B Branch, it's currently under construction, to the lower B Branch that's been functional since 2011. And of course, how we're doing that is building some new culverts, six, eight-foot diameter culverts, going to be tunnelled under there, come join together in a transition structure where we'll join the existing B Branch sewer and then the new culverts that we put under Garfield Avenue, connecting and draining the upper B Branch Creek. And how we're doing it is through tunneling. So one of the things, where we're at with the, with the, this project is, again, this is a HUD project, so we will start designing it in haste, if you will, once we get that HUD agreement in place as far as for that funding goes. But we're still in the process of working with the railroad as far as working out agreement terms. And we just recently, even just last week, resolved one issue that was pretty important to us in terms of how we could install this culvert. So our culvert, like this, this actually shows what looks like a concrete pipe. Ours is going to be a steel pipe. Originally, the railroad was requiring that we had a full depth weld for all of these, when we put these pipes together. And because of the thickness of the pipe, that would literally take about eight hours. So the way it would have to work, would we, we'd have, we'd set a pipe in there, they would push it during the day, then through the night, someone would have to weld it and have it ready for the next pipe, the next ring to push it through. So you can see just the time it will take to install that culvert, and also the uncertainty that a contractor would have to put in bidding a project like that. So we were able to resolve it with the railroad, we're there, they will allow us to use a mechanical joint, which essentially is, is a steel joint, but it, you can allow it to basically push, push the pipes together instead of having to weld, a full depth weld. So that was a major accomplishment just last week. So we are moving that forward. And just to kind of point out the benefit of the railroad, so the picture on the left, again, is the peak elevation as a result of the storm on July 20th. If we had had the railroad culverts in place, the flood depth in the B Branch Creek itself would be about five feet lower. That's, this image is trying to show that, so that would be down quite a bit lower. So you can kind of see the relative importance of getting those culverts through the railroad, and how we really can't expect the flooding situation to be resolved until that and other phases are complete. But again, still providing benefit and reducing damage even in their limited state. Again, there's incremental benefits that we get with each phase that we complete. So 17th Street, a very similar situation to 22nd Street. So what this image is showing, you're standing on 16th Street looking west, or I guess north on West Locust Street, towards 17th Street. So there's a car on the left in the middle who's, their car stalled in the lane there. The picture on the right is just showing the, the public transportation can't go that way, so they have to turn around and try and find some other way to go. It just shows, not only is the flood damaged, but it's also disruption to commerce and just transportation, and basically, this is again, noon during a weekday. So obviously, a major inconvenience for a lot of people, people trying to get to work or, or trying to make deliveries or what have you. I'm just going to show a quick, some images here. I think. So again, this is looking from the same direction. You can see the star, star, the car that is stalled in the middle of the roadway there. And I'm just going to kind of play it forward a little bit, just jump ahead and watch kind of what people have to do. So people come up to the, come up to the street and they don't know, well, can I drive through that? There's a start, a stalled car, so they're trying to turn around. You've got people coming down the street, you can see up ahead. You've got someone who's in their car and not safe to kind of get out of it. Now we've got a Good Samaritan here and the white vehicle is going to come back and push the stalled car out of the street. Still have cars driving through the area. So here's the, again, the public transportation. Now I'm just going to play it and watch, there's going to be a car that comes down at the top of the screen, which is basically coming down from, say, Rosedale or from senior high school. They're coming down the street, and you're going to see what, what kind of they experience. And now they're, they're stalled there and they were lucky, they were fortunate enough to get over the side of the road, and then the, the Good Samaritan, the Bronco's going to help them out again. But again, you can just see that there are obviously issues, and that's what this West Locust Project is aimed at addressing and why it's important, because even with the downstream, we still have issues to deal with as we go west into the watershed a little bit more, as shown here. And then the last one that we've really started work on is the impermeable surface reduction of the green alleys. So we were, obviously been under construction for the last couple of years, but we're going to, it's going to take us quite a while to get all of the alleys within the watershed done. Remember, there are about 240. We completed about 59 before this year, 22 are being constructed right this year, and we have all but eight of those left, or there's only eight left to complete this, this summer. And we'll be done with that. So that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are we still ahead of schedule with that rain we had?
Yeah, we are. It's, it's potentially getting to the point where the landscaping, because unfortunately, the way they're putting that down, they put the topsoil down, and they put in the irrigation system, and these rainstorms sometimes can delay them a little bit, but still should be generally ahead of schedule, still should be, you know, functional by this, by the end of this year or so.
The rain didn't affect the landscaping and?
It did a little bit, but not, nothing, nothing drastic.
Probably because how slow it moves?
Right, right.
Any other questions? Mr. Jones?
What, what substantial issues remain impediments to getting the culvert under the radio, the railroad?
Um, so there's, there's a few legal issues as far as, you know, the liability that they would want us to take on, as far as, just some of the language that we want to look at to make sure we're comfortable with it. The other main one was how, how we can construct it. So for example, they're saying right now that we'd have to stop work every time a train goes by, when even if it was parked on, say, one of their sightings. So what we're trying to do is just work with them to get them comfortable with allowing us to get in there and get it done as soon as possible, and have them realize and recognize the benefits of us getting in there and out of there as fast as possible. The other one has to do with, you know, they're in the business of running a railroad, so, but they also want to be involved and understand what we're doing. So when we send something to them, they're requiring at least 30 days for everything that goes through them. So normally, when we have a project, we would have an engineer, our own engineer, either it would be the city engineer, or the consulting engineer would make a decision as to, yeah, that's, that's acceptable, that'll meet our needs, where this adds another layer where it'd have to go through the railroad. So some things that might only take two hours normally resolved could take 30 days. And so we were trying to resolve that issue with them to have it more, kind of go the way it normally does, so that when someone bids the job, they don't have that uncertainty that they would have to put in their number. I'd say that's kind of probably the three, three big ones.
Thank you. Are you comfortable that you're moving forward at a reasonable speed given the constraints they put on you?
I mean, at this point, they're fairly responsive, seem to be willing to work with us to a certain point, and I mean, that's evidenced by the, you know, allowing us to put the, using mechanical joints, but we'll see. I mean, it's just a matter of how much, you know, the legal issues, what we're willing to accept and how much we should push back, because that's kind of where we're at right now. And we could, right now, just accept everything that they're asking for and probably get this resolved in, you know, 30 days, but obviously, that wouldn't be the best interest of the city necessarily to do that, so. But we have this time now to, to have those conversations and resolve as many of those issues to our satisfaction before we then really get into the design again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions coming? Okay, thank you very much, Darren. It's starting to look really nice down there. Can't wait till we see some green.